I would like to call to order the Monona City Council meeting for Monday, December 2, 2013. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Thomas?
Here.
Alder Bussey?
Here.
Alder Wood?
Here.
Alder Spade is on his way. Alder O'Connor?
Here.
Alder Holmquist?
Here.
Mayor Miller?
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And again, if anyone is here to speak before the council for the public appearances section, if you could fill out one of these white sheets on the corner and hand it to Alder O'Connor, it would be appreciated. Item C, approval of the minutes of the November 18, 2013, meeting. Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Second.
Ladies first. Alder Thomas, motion. Alder Holmquist, approved. Discussion, corrections, deletions, additions. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the minutes have been approved. I am so excited for this next part. If I could be joined at the podium by the Coach of the Year, as nominated by the Green Bay Packers, and the team, if you would all stand, please. Thank you very much. All right. And everyone, wherever you want to move around here is welcome. I have two things that I would like to mention tonight. I would like to honor the 2013 Monona Grove Football Team, state champions of the state of Wisconsin, and I would like to hereby provide this proclamation, which reads as follows. Whereas the Monona Grove High School Football Team won the 2013 WIAA Division III State Football Championship on November 22, 2013, at Camp Randall Stadium, and whereas the state title was the culmination of a perfect 14-0 season and five consecutive Badger South Conference titles, and whereas this state title is only the third in school history and the first state title in 29 years, as some know well know. And whereas Coach Stassi touted his team as one of the best that's ever played at Monona Grove, not because they're the most talented, but rather because of their perseverance and heart. And whereas this perseverance was demonstrated in the state championship game as the Silver Eagles turned a 17-0 deficit at halftime to a 21-17 victory over the Greendale Panthers. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Robert E. Miller, mayor and on behalf of the city council hereby commend and congratulate the 2013 Monona Grove Football Team, along with their head coach, Mike Stassi, assistant coaches, managers, and trainer on their WIAA Division III State Championship Title, and ask the community to join me in celebrating their successful season. Coach, congratulations. As that remarkable comeback happened, I'm a big user of Facebook and social media, I commented, sent my congratulations, as the hordes all did, to this team, and made the mention, now I just hope the mayor can find the key for the city. And thanks with the assistance of City Administrator Pat Marsh, I award you the official key to the city of Monona, which I have never...
I'll keep it brief, but what a great time for these young men, and we are so excited and proud of all the things that they have done as a coaching staff. And, you know, winning an award like Coach of the Year for me doesn't hold as much significance as it is to see what this group has done this year. When you see them hug you and cry and jumping for joy and all the great things that came with this team and all the hard work that they put in, is payment enough? It's just a great, great honor for me to be just a part of it. And I'm truly blessed to be around these young men and have this opportunity to coach these kids. So I would like to introduce our captains, and we have one of the most outstanding senior classes that has gone through this high school in lots of years. Very unselfish, hardworking, truly great young men, and I couldn't be prouder. So I'm gonna step aside for a minute and let these four guys introduce themselves, and then I'd like also the rest of the seniors to introduce themselves as well.
About all of the players, this number?
Yes.
Hi, hello, I'm Jake Decora. I play D tackle and center. A little bit of collar problems, and I was number 56 this year.
My name's Derek Zenger. I was number 25, and I played outside linebacker and running back.
My name is Brock Lippiet. I played linebacker, and I was number 54.
I'm Tyler Blang. I was number 5, and I played quarterback.
And defensive back on the last play.
My name's Jacob Carnes, and I was number 17, and I was wide receiver and cornerback in special teams.
I'm Kyle Wonky, and I played O-line and D-line. I was number 51.
My name is Josh Butteris. I was number 57. I played D tackle and offensive guard.
I'm Sawyer Livsey. I was number 21, and I played cornerback and running back.
I'm Max Etheridge. I was number 24, and I did special teams and defensive back.
I'm Trey Powers. I'm a junior. I'm number 20. I play wide receiver and safety.
And again, we would like to thank each and every one of you for this great honor. We will be putting this in the trophy case at Monona Grove High School, and what a great thing to be able to read through and to remember all the great things that this team has accomplished. We truly are blessed to be able to work with these great individuals here, and it couldn't have happened to a nicer group. To be state champs is just so hard to, it's so hard, and to go 14-0, it's really tough to do. But I can't think of a better group, a more deserving group than this one here. So we thank you very much for having us and bestowing this great honor on us. Thank you so much.
Coach, if you could just one, indulge us for one last thing. I had the pleasure of attending a fantastic pep rally. I thank city staff for the incredible parade that went up Monona Drive, but what struck me and is reflective again, what hopefully we captured in the proclamation, is this team and your belief in this team. Could you share what you shared at the pep rally about when all the media was, what did you say to these guys at halftime? And share that great speech you gave at halftime, please.
It was inspirational. I had to swallow part of my granola bar as I was giving it, and that is true. We didn't get bent out of shape being down 17-0, and these kids, we were down against Milton, and we were down against, of course, Catholic Memorial, and to be real honest with you, our kids, they weren't gonna quit. This just isn't a group that will quit. Whether we were going to win the game or not, I can't sit here and tell you that that would have been the case. But what I can tell you is, I knew they were gonna fight, and I knew if we could just score one time, just crack the ice, get the ball into the end zone, because we had moved the ball in the first half three times inside their 20, we just weren't able to really get it in the end zone. And when we did get it in the end zone, they started playing the clock game. And that was a lethal situation for them to be in, because you can't run the ball very well against this group. And running the ball against them is not easy to do, and apparently they thought they were able to do it, and fortunate for us, you know, the game turned out the way it did. But we were hoping to get them into a game like that, and it fell into our hands, just the way we as coaches would have wanted it to. But like I said, I mean, I want the credit to go to them, the kids. You know, we can point them in the right direction, but I didn't score a touchdown this year, and I didn't make a tackle or really do anything that special. These kids did, and it's a memory they get to keep the rest of their lives, and we're so proud of the things that they did to accomplish it. One of the things we did talk about was squeezing the lemon, and I'll make this quick, and getting all the juice out, you know, the type of effort that's required, because we weren't the most talented group, but we were the best group. We were the best. And we squeezed, and we kept squeezing, until there was no more juice left. And that's what I'm proud of, that these young people here understand the type of work ethic that is necessary to be successful. And now if they can take these things on with them for the rest of their lives, I know they'll be successful. So thank you again, everybody. Much appreciated.
Again, you're welcome to this wonderful city council meeting, and I'm sure you have homework and a lot more fun things to do. And I do have a granola bar for half, depending how this budget process goes. I might need that halftime. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you guys very much. Much appreciate.
How fun. If anyone is here who would like to make an appearance for any item that's not budget related, this is the time to do so. Not seeing anyone, I declare the appearances section closed. Moving on to item E, the public hearing. This is to receive public input regarding the proposed 2014 operating budget. I have a number of requests here. If there's any others, if anyone's come a little later, please fill out the slip, give it to Alder O'Connor, and we'll go from there. So the first is Sally Buffett, 4912 Wallace Avenue, would like to register in favor of the library budget amendments, plural. Christine Welly, of 5,000 Midmore Road, would like to register in favor of the library amendments. Amy Babula, I hope I pronounced that correct, or Babula. 1209 East Main Street, Stoughton, would like to register in favor of the amendments 14-3, 4, and 7. Todd Stebbins, 5,005 McKenna Road, would like to register in favor of the library amendments, 3, 4, and 7. Rhonda Petty, I'm sorry, Rhonda, Kucher, thank you. Rhonda Petty Kucher, 25 Oak Park Way, Pittsburgh, would like to register in favor of the library amendments, 14, 3, 4, and 7. Karen Went, 1218 South Thompson Drive, Madison, would like to register in favor of the library amendment, singular. I had a feeling. Chris Sanger, 907 Progressive Drive, Monona, would like to register in favor of the library budget amendment. Chris, plural or just one of them? Chris is gone. I'm sure it was plural.
It's a silent S.
Silent S, yes. Andy Noth, 4424 Oak Court, would like to register in favor of the library budget amendments. Julianne, Julianne, help me.
Jedkins.
Jedkins?
Jedkins.
Jedkins, oh, I'm sorry, I thought there was a V. Jedkins, excuse me. 3830 Denit Drive would like to register in favor of the library budget amendments. Flamingo would like to register in favor of the library amendments. And Tony Struckert would like to register in favor of the library budget amendments, 14, 3, 4, and 7, and notes and highlights that she is an enthusiastic library staff member, which we certainly know if we know Tony. Then I had two submissions, emails, one that I received from Ben Redding of 6019 Queens Way, who asked that please support the following library-related amendments, 14, 3, 14, 4, and 14, 7, and one that came in electronically that we haven't had time to print yet was from Sarah Kiru, who is in support of the library amendments. So is there anyone else here this evening who would like to register in favor or in opposition to any of the amendments or the budget as itself? Last call. Hearing none, I declare the public hearing session, section of the budget amendment, budget discussions closed. There is no consent agenda this evening, so moving on to unfinished business. Item G1A is consideration of the 2013-2014 Class B liquor or Class C wine and Class B fermented malt beverage license applications for Schresta Family LLC, owned by Madame Schresta, designated by Swad Indian Restaurant at 6,007 Monona Drive, letter A. Is there anyone here from the restaurant this evening? No. This is the second reading, as you remember from the first. Is there a motion for approval of something here? Alder Bussey?
When Mr. Schresta was here, he'd mentioned that he was comfortable with either the Class C wine, Class B, or the liquor license, and as we're up again, he said that there were a couple of entree items that it would be nice to have a cocktail with. We're sort of up against the wall on our liquor license, so I would move approval of this based upon the Class C wine and Class B fermented malt liquor license.
There's a motion for approval of the Class C wine and Class B fermented license, beverage license only by Alder Bussey. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second by Alder Holmquist. Discussion. I see you moving forward, Attorney Cole, is there? Okay. Is there anything else? Hearing nothing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I look forward to the grand opening of the restaurant. Item G1B, consideration of resolution 13-11-1945, which is the adoption of the 2014 operating budget and establishing the tax levy being brought forth by the mayor. Is there a motion for? There's so many. I've talked to Jeff. Normally because we have Mr. Belangi here and he has a longer drive, I try to move things ahead, but we have more staff than Jeff, so out of courtesy to the staff, I ask...
Well, I'm valuable and I am mayor, so...
Well, we'll see what you have to say. We'll be the judge later tonight. But with that, there's a motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, motion and a second. All right, before you, and again, I note through no intentional oversight but accidental oversight, there was an eighth budget amendment brought forth by Alder Bussey, which you should all have handed before you. So unless I hear something the contrary, we'll just go through in consecutive order, and at any point in time, again, I've had my... But if anyone wants clarification or wonders why the mayor did something, please feel free. I'll be more than happy to answer those questions if desired. Item 14-01 is to correct the police overtime. This is a correction, so I do have one in here. And planner professional development budget of $3,500.
Move approval.
Second. There's a motion, second. Discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Budget amendment is approved, 14-02. This is to increase the sustainability initiatives by $5,000, which will help the implementation of the sustainability plan, gathering metrics, educational projects and materials, supplies, membership fees, travel, and professional development. This is sponsored by Alder's Holmquist and O'Connor. Is there a motion for approval? Move approval. Is there a second? There's a motion, second. Discussion. Alder Holmquist or Alder O'Connor?
This is, the committee had originally approved requesting $10,000, and then the mayor's, that never got to the city administrator, I think, in time to be included in the budget. So we would like to continue with implementation of the sustainability plan and also have some funding to provide some, for some educational projects, we're planning on joining the Dane Bi-Local organization, and some additional funding for Janine, who when she goes to these green tier meetings, it's come to our attention, is totally funding herself, sometimes driving hundreds of miles. So we would like to increase that from 5,000, proposing the mayor's budget to 10,000.
Alder Bussey?
Do you know what we spent in this last year, and is this, I mean, the 10,000, is there like a schedule of expenditures, or is this just...
Part of this will go towards the finalizing the sustainability plan, and then as part of the sustainability plan, we need to gather metrics in order to come up with goal, to specify our goals more. And then we also, as part of the sustainability plan, would like to do some educational projects and, we would need some materials and supplies and things for those kind of things.
But there's not a line item budget saying this is what we need for this item, or...
Not for each specific item.
So how do we know that 10,000 is too much or too little? Is it...
Well, we had, we, well, we do have, we have a proposal for 5,000 from the firm that is working with us on the sustainability plan for finalizing the plan. The additional 5,000 is for implementing the plan and for these other items.
Okay, thank you.
Janine, is there anything you wanted to add? Alder Holmquist?
Nope, that last summed it up. 5K is for the finishing the plan, doing the metrics, and the other is for supporting education materials and getting some of it kick-started.
Further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Amendment two passes. Item 14-03, amendment is to increase the library expenditures for salaries of non-governmental represented staffs by $3,160. This is to give them a full 2.5 percent pay increase, which the non-rep city employees is budgeted, are budgeted for. This was brought forth by Alder's O'Connor. And Wood, is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Is there a second? There's a motion, second. Discussion. Alder Holmquist?
I want to make sure I'm not confused of what the difference is between 1403 and 1407. One of the sponsors or administrator can speak to that.
Pat? Administrator Marsh?
Yeah, 1403 is strictly, originally the library nonrepresented employees were budgeted at 1.5 percent by the library board and the director, and this would get them up to 2.5 as the rest of the nonrepresentative staff is in the city. And then number seven, 1407, is for employees that make under $20 an hour. It would be a 50 cent raise instead of a 2.5 percent raise.
In lieu of or in addition to?
In lieu of.
In lieu of. So those under 20,000 annualized salary will be affected by 14...
Under $20 an hour.
Oh, $20 an hour. Under $20 an hour are affected by 1407. Everyone else in the library nonrepresented staffs affected by 1403.
Correct.
And the two balance out, that everyone gets either a 2.5 percent raise, 50 cents an hour raise.
Correct.
Alder Holmquist?
And Alder Wood might have an answer for some of the previous, but I just want to make sure I'm understanding things correctly. The, all the other city staff are being budgeted for the 2.5 percent. It was brought forth...
That's what's...
At the mayor, at 1.5.
No.
No.
No, the mayor, I have 2.5 in my budget.
For the rest of the city, but not for the library, none?
Oh, no, not for the library. I'm sorry. Excuse me. Is Eric here? I don't know. If you want to explain, he had a reason why, and it was a good reason.
Alder Holmquist, because of the, we couldn't use the fund balance in 2014 going forward. So I wanted to keep costs and the cities to share the appropriation down somewhat. So in the six days that I had to do the budget, I kind of chose 1.5 percent. The library board actually didn't get a look at this until after it was submitted to the mayor, so this is kind of our last kick at that cat, if that makes sense.
Alder Wood?
Excuse me, yeah, when the library board met last week, last week? Week, whatever it was. Week before, two weeks ago. That was actually the first time we'd had a chance to review the library budget as a board, and that was, so the board actually went on record as supporting a 2.5 percent increase, like the rest of the city nonreps would get for the library staff, and that's what this amendment would do. For those not making $20 an hour, those are addressed later.
Alder Thomas?
So it's clear, for all city employees, library and non-library, they get, nonrep, 2.5 percent in, the plan is to give them a 2.5 percent increase unless they make less than $20 an hour, in which case they'd get 50 cents an hour.
It's only library at that 20 cents an hour, correct?
Everybody.
Everybody?
Everybody that makes under $20 an hour in the city.
Which I, which I want to commend you, because I think giving people at the lower end a dollar amount is fairer to them than a percentage increase, which just creates a larger spread between those above and those below. So it's infinitely more, in my opinion, the fairer way to meet out raises, but I just want to make sure, so everybody who's, who works for... Does this include part-time or is it just full-time? Is it seasonal, part-time?
Permanent employees.
Permanent?
Part-time, board.
All permanent city employees?
Did you figure out the number?
Who make less than $20 an hour will get a 50 cent bump.
That's, yeah.
And the others will get 2.5. That's...
Yep. That's clear, almost, almost exactly correct, except the 2.5 percent is a pool of money that is divided. Not every employee's gonna get 2.5 percent. That would be the average.
Okay.
And it would be up to the department heads and myself as to the exact increase an employee gets.
But it's commensurate to 2.5 percent across the board for those over 20,000 annual.
And what happens if someone, this is sidebar piece, but suppose when someone quits and you have the 2.5 percent there, but they don't get a raise because they've quit, does that 2.5...
It's it's...
Okay.
It's not a, it's not a use it or lose it budget, it's, use it appropriately or don't use it at all.
Okay.
So this is based upon current staffing as of tonight or whenever this is gonna be?
January 1.
January 1, I guess, yeah. January 1, thank you. Anything else, Alder Wood?
No.
All right. Further questions, discussions? Hearing none? How big is this? We'll just do a total. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Amendment three carries. Amendment 14-04 is to increase the library expenditures by a total of $3,000 to be distributed as, in the following manner. Adult books would re... Adult books would receive one thousand dollars, AV materials would receive one thousand dollars, children's books would receive seven hundred and fifty dollars, and the young adult books would receive two hundred and fifty dollars. Brought forth by Alders O'Connor and Wood. Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Is there a second? There's a motion and second. Alder O'Connor?
Uh, the initial, uh, budget proposed a reduction in materials expenditures of sixty-four hundred dollars and this would, um, cut that in half. So, so sixty-four hundred dollars as compared to what was available to spend this year. And as we know, library, the cost of library materials continues to increase.
And this has no impact on book for life or this is above and beyond book for, book for life continues in the manner that it was?
Correct.
With the operating, okay. Alder Wood, anything you care to add?
No.
Questions? Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? The amendment passes. Item fourteen dash zero five is to add thirty-five hundred dollars to the parks and rec budget to allow for a permanent part-time office assistant. This was brought forth by Alders Spate and O'Connor. Alder Spate is, was unable to attend the meeting this evening. So Alder O'Connor, sir, will be speaking on his behalf. Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Alder O'Connor?
Uh, this position was originally proposed in the mayor's budget as a nine-month position and we felt that the city, it will be easier to attract and retain better quality, long-term employee if it's a, uh, full-year position rather than having to hire someone new or hopefully the same person would come back and retrain them, uh, every year. We also feel that this will help increase program revenue because it frees up Jake and Missy to do more programming and they're expected to increase their program revenues. And the projected revenue for programs, as proposed in the mayor's budget, was not cut when the, um, position was only made a nine-month position. So we, we feel that that would impact the amount of revenue in the next year.
Questions? Alder Bussie?
Mayor, what was your, um, reasoning behind, um, reducing this?
When I met, when Mark, Pat and I met with Jake, went over the budget and, um, one of the concerns I had and continue to have when Jake made the request was, um, we've had phenomenal growth within the department and it's done some great things, but my concern is, is I'm not aware and talking to Jake of an audit of, I can't, is everything running at, at full capacity or should we be looking at, perhaps jettisoning some programs that are not profitable or using a, consuming additional staff? So I've asked and Jake agreed that he's going to audit the full program, you know, have some metrics in terms of what we keep and, because I just don't think we have the capacity to just keep adding and adding. And we've had some rate increases, which I supported and stuff too. So it was a compromise on my, on our part, both of our part, my part, that, okay, he needs time to do that, so the staff would help, but I just did not feel as I was trying to keep the budget down, that, um, I wasn't in agreement to go with the total amount. Did that answer your question, Alder Bussie?
So you said it was a compromise, was it the request for, I mean, from, from 2013 to what was submitted, was it greater than this thirty-five hundred? And, and there was a compromise in between or I'm not sure? Was it, there's, there's an impact here at thirty-five hundred dollars, correct?
Correct.
But i- is that, um, when you said you had discussed this, um, there was a compromise, so was, was it originally a seven, seven thousand dollar request that's been cut back?
It would have been this, was the original request, correct? So it's back to the original. So I didn't cut it in half, I just reduced it by the three months.
And that was to?
By thirty-five hundred.
That was because the thought was that we'd, you'd be evaluating the programs that may not have the participation?
That was the reason in part, not solely, because it's more money than, I'm sure they can analyze their programs without that much money, but there, you know, the argument was convincing that they have a need for additional help during visit periods and then I want them to do a program review. So I felt that, I don't know if this is, seventy-five percent of what was requested was in my budget and Alder Spate and O'Connor have asked to go to one hundred percent. And for me, it was just looking at the total picture of the expenditures. You know, I had my targets and this was one area I felt comfortable in, in, in that number. Alder Thomas?
I'm, I'm not sure I'm convinced that it would be difficult to get someone to work nine months of the year. I can think of a, a number of retired women who might go south for the winter and love to work the rest of the year. I mean, there are a couple of them I, I can think of that are just crackerjack employees. And so I guess I'm not willing to make the assumption that that's a good rationale to up it. Because I, there's nothing that tells me that's the case and I, and I've, I've used that as an argument that I think sometimes it's difficult to get people. I'm not sure I think it is in this particular case. And I guess from my perspective, I'd rather see us try to get someone and if we can't, then, then we could up it, but I'd rather see us make, make the attempt and also do what the mayor said and, um, take a look at, um, what we're doing. Are we happy with what we're doing? Can we cut back with some things? I think there's not enough information to, to, um, support the need for the amendment. If there was something that, I mean, if it could be proven to me that we couldn't get someone and that the metrics prove that we needed someone twelve months instead of nine months, I'd be happy, even though I won't, I don't plan to support the amendment, I would be happy to take money out of the contingency fund to support it if we could, if it could be proven that we needed to do it. But I'm still, um, not convinced that the need exists at this point in time.
Alder O'Connor?
I don't think the, the fact that it might be hard to attract someone for a nine-month position was, that wasn't our only rationale for this. I think part of it also is if it was a different, if you had one person who didn't want to come back the next year, then you'd be retraining, you'd be doing new training of someone every, you know, once a year, whatever. But the, the main thing is, is that this allows Jake and Missy to have more time because their really heavy program planning time is during this three months that they would not be having the help. And when there's no one there to answer the phone or when people come to the window or whatever, or then they're taking care of that instead of spending their time planning or they're not there, no one's there, they're out and about in other, you know, at various parks and wherever, meeting with people or whatever, you know, they have a great variety of things they do. So it's, it wasn't just the idea that they wouldn't be able to find someone. And they are expected to bring in increased revenue and part of that comes because of having the time to plan the programs.
If I could just add on that, no one appreciates it more that there's increased revenue, but I'm not, that was the budget that was submitted. And the question would be, with the, that twenty-five percent reduction that I put in my budget, is that impact, you know, how key was that to get the numbers that were submitted? I just accepted the revenue budget.
Right, and that, but that was with the idea that there would be a, a?
Right.
Twelve month, because it was in that position.
But that didn't come up in the discussions at that point in time. Jake, was, where'd he go? Oh, there he is. Anything you wanted to add?
Sure. Um, we're very fortunate to be in a community that supports park and recreation and we've been able to develop, uh, a lot of new programs, special events and activities for people of all ages and, and what we found is that, um, putting together basically?
Andy?
What we're working on right now is putting together a department work plan. And that basically details.
Do you want us to read that or?
No. It's just basically a spreadsheet that's going through all the different activities that we have in the department with park administration, recreation programs, planning, and then it has initials on who's responsible for those activities. And so it's, it's not done, it's something that I plan on presenting to the park and recreation board and the council, but it does give a, a snapshot of all the different activities and events that we're responsible for. And this position basically allows the full-time staff the opportunities to focus on our existing programs and events. The next three years in our department are going to be critical to the success of, of what we do. Community engagement right now is huge. How do we address our constituents? How do we develop partnerships with local agencies, both business and local health agencies? We're really looking at how we can promote Manona as a place to live, work and play and how we can focus on hea- healthy, active lifestyles. These type of activities take time to plan and promote and, um, execute. And when we do that is in this time of year now, you know, we've been able to do more work in the last two weeks with it being not as busy and, and planning what we're going to be doing for next summer and fall than we normally get to, um, because it's been less busy, but we would have the opportunity to even do more, um, as we move through the months of January, February and March, if we have that, uh, additional office coverage. I think the expectation level is, is that we respond to phone calls and emails and in-person visits as soon as possible. And we just have activities and events and meetings right now where we don't have staff to greet those people or to answer the phone call in the afternoon. I just don't find that acceptable or the, the alternative is that we're not able to concentrate on somebody's bigger pitch, picture type of planning and activities. So we can maintain the status quo, do the same programs, the same special events that we've done, but in order to take it to the next level of policy, um, documentation to increase efficiency, I believe that we need to have this be a permanent part-time position.
Alder Thomas?
Jake, um, if we go with the three-quarter position, that, that was reduced, the revenue was not reduced. If it drops from the full to the three-quarter, how will that impact the revenue projections that are in the budget?
Sure. Optimistically, I'd like to think that we can still meet them. I like the challenge, but?
Realistically?
Realistically, I don't think it's feasible to say, those are optimal revenue projections, given that we can spend the additional time that we need to on those programs that are, are what we would say cash cows, are revenue generators that produce revenue above and beyond what the, uh, program costs are. So we have certain programs that make money on kind of the exact expenses and then we have certain programs that break even and some programs that don't make money. They might be new programs or they might be an idea that we thought was a good idea, but we just didn't get the participation numbers. And so we need to figure out why those programs that aren't running, aren't running. And I can tell you for a fact that the amount of time that we put into a program and marketing it and getting the word out via Facebook blast, email blast, promoting the instructor, finding the right instructor for the program correlate with the success of the program. And so what we have is this overall department in which, how much time can we allocate to adult yoga versus youth basketball versus the fall festival versus, uh, park and open space plan? And the more time that we have to allocate to those programs that, um, could benefit by having more administrative time to them, that's where we see the revenue increase. So the big issue that we have is when we don't have a program meet the minimum number of participants and we have to cancel. Because on the, on the backend, we've spent, you know, eight to 10 staff hours, administrative hours and developing it, booking the facility, finding the instructor, going through the HR process of hiring the instructor, uh, training, um, and then marketing the program. So that, that's where I look at how we can keep that revenue line in which we submitted it, um, in the budget process. I, I don't know if we can get to the whole, whatever the exact revenue amount. It's, it's always a, an educated, um, best guess on, on where we're going to be at for revenues. You know, some, some of our programs far exceeded what our projections were from last year. Some of them were less and we have to say, are those programs what people don't want? Because it's, and why don't they want them? Is it cost, is it the instructor, is it the times, is it the facility? But all that kind of detective work takes time. It takes in-person conversations with our, our frequent, um, participation people, it takes feedback surveys, it takes, uh, trying to find out those, it's easy to poll the people that participate in our programs or in an event. It's harder to find the people that aren't participating or they're not in our system and why they're not. And so that's what we're looking at when we're evaluating programs.
Alder Thomas, then Alder Holmquist.
Sort of a, a sort of follow-up question. What, what's rolling through my head here, which is difficult to figure out for me, let alone anybody else sometimes, but is, you know, the notion of saying, okay, I'd, I'd support you going ahead and doing this, but I want metrics to show at the end of next year that it, that it, that it was worth the effort and that there was results.
Sure.
Sometimes they're monetary and sometimes it's just having, um, fifty percent, you know, a percentage more involved. So I, I'm sitting here saying, well, you know, you go ahead and do it, but if it doesn't work, then, then you gotta be prepared to do something different next year, which is, oh, it's difficult to undo something that you've done. So, um, you know, I, I guess the, the question that, that the mayor asked about measuring what works, what's successful, how will you improve upon it? I, I would hope that if you get the extra body, that you would spend some time developing measurable, um, metrics that we could, that you could tell whether it's working or whether it's not and what you need to do more of.
Absolutely, yeah. Those are exactly the things that we would like to do, but we don't have necessarily the time to do it right now, is to do these satisfaction surveys and coming up with a, a rating score to say, you know, this program has a ninety-eight percent, you know, success or positive feedback to it. You know, and this is what the, you know, the, the revenue line was. I mean, we typically judge success right now as if the program runs and doesn't make money. But that's not always the overlying theme to whether a program is a good program or not, or whether people are going to come back to, you know, take that program or other programs. And if we don't have that time to work with our existing instructors and coach them during a program, sometimes it's too late. If we have, say, a program and I get a feedback on the second to last day of the class or program that, hey, you know, your instructor really wasn't that good, well, that doesn't help us, you know, we need to be able to have the time to go out and monitor the program, work with the instructor, provide feedback and coaching as necessary, so we can make sure that each of these programs that we run are successful and that people want to sign up for additional programs, whether or not it's the same program or something else within the department.
Okay, thank you.
Alder Holmquist?
Jake, I think you, you put it really well right there at the end and that had to do with, um, the role of the director and supervisor is really that, is evaluating program development, determining what's working, what's not working, coaching people that are carrying things out. And it's clear to me that when you're trying to do that and you're also trying to respond to office responsibilities and clerical responsibilities, you can't do your best job. And by compromising, um, three months, I don't think we would accomplish what it is that we would want you and the supervisor to be able to carry out. The second item that was brought up was this issue about, um, program evaluation and, and determining metrics for success. And I'm really cautious when we tie, um, programming to, um, pure revenue. And you kind of touched on it, particularly a lot of the programs that you run are not going to be profitable. And if they were, your participation would crash. And a lot of the individuals that were seeking to get involved in these events are not necessarily folks that would be able to? are not necessarily folks that would be able to pay higher and higher and higher rates to make it profitable. So if and when that shows up, I want to make sure that profit or revenue isn't the only driver. I know it wouldn't be. But I would also encourage that it's not the key driver. But definitely it's something that we have to pay attention to. But I want to make sure that that's important. The issue of connecting the full-time status with revenue, I see it more of connecting the full-time status to quality.
If I could just clarify what the conversations that led to the mayor's budget was, had nothing to do with revenue. It had everything to do with appreciation of staff, time, and effort. And the entire conversation was based upon my concern and the reason for the audit is nobody can do everything all of the time. So how do we do that? And I'm hesitant for the reasons that I think Alder Thomas touched on about once you start adding, we don't seem to subtract too well. So I thought, what's a fair compromise? Because I think the department and the director, Jake, not the Jake, deserves some appreciation and some effort in that way. But it was purely, there was never, I don't think, as was pointed out earlier this evening, we didn't touch the revenue. He submitted the revenue and I, okay, I accept that. But the concern was, and as it related to this request, they're trying to do more and more. Is it fair? So again, to me, it was a healthy way. Let's start down this path and we'll go one of two ways. We'll either withdraw, or we'll take it up to 100% and beyond if warranted. So I guess I just am a little concerned about this discussion on it's all about the almighty dollar. It was not, it was more about taking care of the staff.
And my comment was not necessarily directly in relation to that about the discussion you guys had, but more in the larger discussion of oftentimes it gets tossed out, not just in city government, but to evaluate programs that might not necessarily be put in place to purely generate a profit. And there are other factors that I want us to consider. And where I link it to this office and receptional kind of duties is to free up the folks that were asking to do a different job, to allow them to do it without being constantly interrupted and not sacrifice the quality and community engagement. When someone shows up and there's no one there, it's horrible. And that's a lot of afternoons.
I think that's a valid, okay. Alder Bussie?
The history of the Recreation Aquatic Supervisor position, was that always a full-time position? In the past five or six years?
Well, it was new in the 2010 or 11 budget.
We added that new position to address a lot of the issues, if my memory serves me right, that we're discussing now. And now we seem to be increasing another position. And I've got a concern on that. I, you know, I think Alder Holmquist brings up a good point. You can't always tie it to dollars. But participation, I think, is also something that one should look at. And if we see programs with either declining interest or whatever, I think what the mayor's saying is maybe those are, you know, a good effort, but maybe we shouldn't continue with those. We've only have, we've got limited resources. And do we, where do we stop? And if some things are, if the market isn't accepting of some activities, but they are of others, let's move on to what they're into now. And I think that it's important to have the support, but I'm very concerned that, you know, we had this new position and now we're seeming to grow another new position. So I, what, I thought a few years ago when we added that other position, that would help with this problem of not having people there and having coverage over the winter months. And now it seems we're back at the table asking for it again. I don't, I don't get it. I'm missing something.
It has helped, but we've seen tremendous growth over the last three years in the department. Not only in just the number of participants we've had in certain programs at the outdoor pool, but also in what we're offering. For example, our department took over the Fall Festival from a committee level. That takes a tremendous amount of staff time to develop, plan, implement, and market. When I first started, I was running programs. I was teaching little kids how to play soccer. You know, that's how far we've come to the point of, you know, where the department was at in 2008 to where we're at now in 2013. The Recreation Aquatic Supervisor has helped. But if we want to make it an office-coverage position, it's really not using the position to the fullest that it can be. And that's really taking the aquatics portion of it, going from a more seasonal job in nature to now we're starting developing job descriptions, our seasonal, to almost HR functions where we're putting out the, that position is putting out the job postings, is recruiting, is selecting, interviewing, training. So that process starts in December and goes all the way through April, May. Not only do we have that, but we also have the existing recreations and new recreation programs. Youth Soccer, we have over 140 kids that we didn't have when that position was created. We didn't have the Who Who Hustle, which has, you know, 300 participants in it. So we have not only special events, community engagement programs, and these recreation programs. So due to the community interest in what we offer, the demand for our programs and activities and events have grown. And that position has changed from sitting in an office and taking phone calls in the afternoon over the winter months to planning the next season of activities.
Further question, Alder Thomas?
Yeah, just an observation. You know, we can question the success of programs because of lack of participation. But it's very difficult at this point in time, I think you would argue, I'll argue for you, that if you don't put the appropriate efforts into promoting, doing whatever, you can't tell if the lack of participation or low participation or interest is because people aren't interested or because you haven't done all you need to do to make the program be successful. And I'm interpreting this as you're shot at wanting to have the time to make those programs successful or get rid of them. I mean, that's what I think I'm hearing you say between the lines. Am I?
Absolutely. It's not about adding additional programs from my end. It's about evaluating existing programs and activities and really looking what our role is in the community. And maybe we offer less recreation programs, but we are a conduit for other organizations and groups to use our facilities for those type of programs. You know, one of the big things that we're working on right now is an initiative to reduce childhood obesity. And so I'm on a collaboration with a lot of different agencies, from local public health agencies to private healthcare facilities, to doctors, to maybe even a lawyer or two. And with the goal of what can we do together, you know, and it might be working with the YMCA or, you know, the school district on these type of initiatives. And those type of things take time and planning. And then it looks at, okay, are we going to spend our time on something like this over the next five years? Are we going to continue to focus on, you know, adult pickleball or a type of program that might get seven or eight participants? Whereas, you know, I'm looking at, taking a hard look at what's the best bang for the buck for the community for us to offer and for us to be involved with.
Further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion, amendment passes. Item 14-06. Six. 14 dash 06 is to add $3,500 for increased salary for the Recreation/Aquatic Supervisor position. This was sponsored by Alder Spate and O'Connor. Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Alder O'Connor?
I think we all got the city administrator's report on comparable salaries from other communities in this area. Their current Recreation Aquatic Supervisor's salary is, it's about 20% lower than the average with comparable communities. And she has more responsibilities in terms of being an aquatic supervisor than is the case in some of those comparable communities as well. She was recently named the Young Aquatic Professional of the Year, which is a statewide award. So I think it's obvious that she's doing a good job. This is something that her peers nominated her for. Again, this is a matter of the need to maintain quality staff. And we would like to bring her, this would bring her salary up a little bit more towards the median salary of comparable communities, which I think that's generally our policy, our goal, isn't it? To have city staff being about the median, so.
Further discussion? Alder Holmquist?
Alder O'Connor, can you speak to this $3,500 increase? If right now this individual's 20% below the mean, would this bring them to the mean, above the mean?
I think it would still be a little bit less. And to tell you the truth, I did, just in looking at this list, 3,500 would take her up to just about, it would just take her up to the next, the next lowest salary, which is Stoughton is 39.6. Everyone else is in the 40,000s up to, well, Fitchburg is 63,000. That's obviously higher than, I think we were looking at numbers, not including Fitchburg, Middleton, and Sun Prairie. So it was 20% less than the average of the rest of them. So I don't, it would not take her up to the mean. But it would be something.
Alder Bussie?
Yeah, I, I'm, I don't know. I'm uncomfortable with this because I don't know that it's council's job to make this type of a decision. I think that the department had the city administrator and the mayor reviewed an individual's compensation. They, and when they consider that, there's many pieces of the puzzle. They look at, you know, opportunities for non-represented staff to receive extra funds through the bonus pool. You know, it's not like, earlier tonight, we talked about, you know, a group bringing up to two and a half. We're talking about an individual now. And is it the council's job? And I don't think it is. I think it's the administration's job to come before us and they may, you know, we weren't privy to their discussion on their budget as far as what the arm wrestling was and what they decided to come up with. But I don't think it's our job. And I don't want to set a precedent where we're going to be picking out an individual and arguing that, whether that individual, now, city attorney, city administrator, you know, I think that's a little bit different. But we're talking about, you know, there's three different layers here. There's the department head, the city administrator, and the mayor. And I think it's a bad precedence for us to be looking at that. And where do we stop? And in what department do we stop? Do we have to evaluate everybody? I just think it's, I think it's a bad precedent.
Alder Holmquist and Alder Wood?
And I appreciate the concern because I have some similar concerns in the sense of picking individuals and determining compensation package based on that. At the same time, I just question because I don't know. How would compensation adjustment be made if it was determined either by a department head or city administrator to review that?
The way, under the current mayor, the way it's been handled, and I think this has been, I've been very public. I don't manage individuals but one. I manage the city administrator, and I look to the city administrator to work. That does not mean that I don't meet with department heads and staff. And I wish I did more of it, but I try to do as much as I can. But I do not manage. So in the budget process, I ask for the proposals from the, as it relates to salary, from the department heads and run it through the finance director and the city administrator. And then, and we're not going to get, I mean, this is a personnel item. There are personnel parts to this too. And that's, we're not going there. But that is something that I also look and see about other things. But as the general rule of thumb, I defer to the recommendations of the administrator. And 97, 8% of the time, we agree. We don't always agree. And then I reserve the right to interject, to disagree. So that's how it comes up. I have, and I guess I am going, after you've all had a chance to talk, I'm going to ask the city administrator, because I think this puts him in a very difficult spot. And Alder Bussie has hit that in terms of why this person versus that. But, you know, I, I guess I clarify that.
That's why I was indicating, if it was determined and brought to someone's attention and they had a discussion, how does the process happen? That a potential compensation change may happen. Not necessarily for this particular individual, just in general. You have person X, and you realize afterwards, you know what? We want to renegotiate for the compensation package for that individual. How would that happen?
I would bring it forth.
Yep, he would bring it forth. And Jake made a very, I mean, this was vetted. You know, Jake did an excellent job of going to bat for that supervisor. But after meeting with these two, I elected to take a different approach to it. Alder Thomas?
Yeah, I was just going to say, in the past, what has happened is either the mayor, the council, or the administrator has said, it's time to take a look and see how our employees rank with other employees with similar positions in the county. And you have to weigh a lot of things, because sometimes people have been there for a long time. The city's a bigger, but, and then a recommendation comes forth from the city administrator that says, I think this one is out of whack. I think this one is out of whack. Maybe you try and set a goal that says, we want to be in the middle, or we want to be one notch above. And you set some money aside in a pot, and you do it. And you don't do it, generally speaking, based on the individual. You do it based on the position. Because there's money set aside in the mayor's secret pot, where he can give one time, he and the administrator can give one-time bonuses to people who do extraordinary jobs. So that's the way it's been in the past.
Alder Wood?
I believe, two years ago, we did a review of all the management, the department heads, and I believe in the police department, I may be wrong on this. I thought we went down to the lieutenants and the sergeants as well.
Correct.
And gave raises based on, funded raises based on how they compared to, sort of, to bring them up to the median. I guess I look at this, this amendment is doing that. It's not giving this person a raise. It's saying that that position, this position is at a salary level lower than it ought to be relative to other comparables. I think we did that either at the time or right around the time this position was being created. Or maybe, I'm not sure what the time was exactly, why it wasn't included. But to me, it's a high enough level position. It could have been, like I said, we did include, we have all the department heads and police lieutenants and sergeants, so.
Further questions? I would like to ask the city administrator.
Yeah, there, Alderman Wood explained that correctly. That adjustment was made a couple of years ago where there were glaring deficiencies in how we were compensating some of our employees at various department head levels or, you know, supervisory levels and so on and so forth. But with that said, when a person is brought in, a person with limited experience... But with that said, when, when a person is brought in, a person with limited experience, they don't necessarily go right into the median salary. They start out lower, and as they gain the experience and the confidence of the managers within the city, they move up into that midpoint range. I, I think we have a few individuals that have been hired within the last couple of years that are very, very good employees, but they're not making what their predecessors did due to longevity, due to confidence of their managers, and experience, and sometimes education. All those variables come into play. Once those variables are considered and, and looked at by both the department head and myself, we would make a recommendation to move an individual to a midpoint. And I believe that was the case with all of the existing department heads that we adjusted in two or three years ago. Since then, we've had, frankly, you know, some newer, younger, great, great employees. And I, with our younger staff that have been hired over the last couple of years. But those numbers are not just a simple midpoint. You bring somebody in at, there's other variables.
Alder O'Connor?
Again, I don't think this would bring her to the midpoint, or bring that position to the midpoint.
Alder Bussie?
And again, I, I think that's where, as a council, I don't think we want to get into that. I think we have to rely on the process and the, you know, the recommendation of, of the administrator, because we weren't involved in all the decisions made when they were hired, what their potential package is. We're not privy to that, and I think it's a bad precedent for us to, and then if we pass this, what happens to the other, the other departments? I think it's.
Hearing none? All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
The amendment fails. Moving on to item 1407 is, is intended to increase the wages for non-rep employees, either full or part-time, making less than $20 per hour, representing a 50% increase. And I think this was discussed before, was brought, is being brought forth by Alder Wood. There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Alder Wood?
Well, we did, did discuss it before. One thing I did want to note, I had asked the police chief, because we did not, I believe we did not include dispatchers in this mark.
Right.
And he had emailed me back that he had calculated that it's about $200, but I don't have the exact number, I don't know if you do.
That, that's, would need to be added to this, $200?
Two hundred.
About 200.
So if it's at all close for time's sake, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
250, then I would like, I guess, a friendly amendment to that, to increase it by 250.
Would the maker of the motion agree to the friendly amendment? All right, so it's 250, so it's 1733.
1733.
1733. Anything further you wanted to add, Alder Wood?
No.
Discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And this is the additional amendment that was added to your packet this evening. It's 14-08, which is to decrease the library's gas and electric expenditure by $3,500, represented as savings from the new solar system. This is brought forth by Alder Bussie, and well, I'm going to ask Attorney Cole to step in on this, too. Is there a motion for approval?
More approval?
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Alder Bussie?
The other departments all agreed to reduction in the electric due to the proposed savings with the new solar system. Library hadn't talked to Eric, and he gave me his calculations as to what the proposed savings would, would be, and so I brought this forward.
And I think it's important that, and I'm going to ask city attorney Cole to address, but we still do not have an agreement in place to be able to plug into the grid for this project. Can you, did we, do you have some good news today?
Uh, no.
Okay.
You have bad news.
No. I guess lack of news would be more accurate. As you all may know, we're required by law to have what's called an interconnection agreement with the utility, with MG&E, because any surplus power that is not used would be placed onto the grid. The Wisconsin Administrative Code has conditions that have to be met for an interconnection agreement. We've provided all those to MG&E. MG&E has inquired of the city's partner, Falcon Energy, asked several questions that have nothing to do with interconnection. And we've answered them to the best that we can. They want more information, and our consultant has advised, and I've agreed with him, that at this point, MG&E needs to either approve the interconnection agreement, or tell us in what way we have not complied with the requirements of the Administrative Code, and allow us to, to meet those requirements. After they do that, and we get the interconnection agreement, we'd be happy to answer other questions and provide other data and other things related to this project. But at this point, MG&E needs to decide whether or not they're going to sign this agreement with us, or they, they need to tell us why they haven't. And so at this point, we're in limbo with MG&E right now.
Was there not a deadline Friday to be met of some, that they had to respond to? A, a big part of this was insurability, correct, about their concern as us plugging into their wonderful grid?
Correct.
And in case we would do harm to their grid, so there was a substantial insurance policy required. And my understanding is, we have gone through all the hoops to accommodate that request, and that was the last remaining request?
We have. There are, the law sets forth the requirements for insurance, and we believe that MG&E's requirements were in excess of that. Nonetheless, we did talk to our insurer. Our insurer was able to write the policy that MG&E required, and that was tendered to them. And they, they have not, to my knowledge, objected to that at all. I, I don't think insurance is, is the holdup here.
I've had conversations with MG&E legal staff personally, and they are supportive of green energy. They, they are going with caution. I can't, I'd probably be lying to say they're greeting this with open arms, but, you know, I don't think they are going to be obstructive in the long run, but it's going to come down. So the whole reason for this discussion is, I think Alder Bussie's amendment is appropriate based upon what has been done with other departments, and I support, and, and, I'm sorry, I missed that, or that would have been in the mayor's original budget. I only bring forth that, I don't feel, obviously, it's fair to hold departments and staff responsible for utility bills if the solar system is not fully operational. Do I think it will be by January 1st? I would certainly hope so because of, we have a good lawyer, and good staff, and there's a lot of time and effort being in there. But there is the what-if. So there's, I think what you need to consider tonight is, there's two ways to go about this. One, we live with the budget, and however this amendment stands, if it's added to, or, you know, however this fits into the budget, and that we have a reserve account in case that the budget, or we just do it, that we go on record, we're cognizant that it's not up and operating, and we'll have overages in those months, and we'll pay those overages, and they will be budget overages without any accountability, I mean, it's not the staff's fault. So I think Alder Wood was first, then Alder Thomas, Alder O'Connor, and then Alder Holmquist. Alder Wood?
Question, excuse me, question for the city attorney. So if we get down to hard tax, and MG&E, it just continues to not be responsive essentially, is just kind of the way I'm reading what you're saying, but what's our, do we have a remedy at that point?
Well, I, in fairness to them, I don't know that I would characterize them as unresponsive. I, I think, in their view, they're, they're analyzing the, the project. In our view, maybe a little overzealously, but, you know, I, I wouldn't characterize it as obstructionistic. To answer your question, though, if they do refuse to do it, our remedy is to go to PSC, to compel them to issue the interconnect agreement on the grounds that we have met the requirements of the Administrative Code.
And I assume that would be a month's long process?
Yes.
Okay. Do we know what the total amount of, how much have we assumed we're going to save in the budget overall for all the departments?
Not right at fingertip, but yeah, we do have it. It was, we reduced it within Public Works Building, we reduced it at City Hall.
The general buildings.
The general buildings. Be able to pull that number.
So I think we either have to, I mean, I, I don't have a problem with this budget. I think it's fair if all the other departments have, have done it. But I think we face, a bigger question is, do we, do we levy, how do we levy? Do we levy assuming this is going to happen, or do we levy assuming it's not? And if we don't, we levy assuming that we are going to get the solar hooked up right away, and it doesn't happen, then we'll just have to take it out of fund balance?
Mm-hmm.
And is it, but I guess, I don't think it's a huge dollar amount, but do we have any ballpark?
Janine, could, would you be in the position to ballpark what we reduce?
A guesstimate, Mark, 10% of the utility bill?
Thirty thousand.
We reduced it 30,000. So there'd be 30,000 exposure out of the fund balance?
I think we could, my thought would be.
For the whole year. That's, that's 12 months.
Right, so we could live with that, out of the fund balance.
So it's 2,500 a month is what's at stake.
Yeah, something like, yeah, okay.
And, and again, I, too, what the CEO and the VP, you know, they're on board, but...
Right, I just heard the city attorneys describing them asking for information not related to the connection agreement, and...
And I think to the citizens, the more important question is, worst, worst case, we're fully indemnified with this project, is totally at the risk. It would be so unfortunate, and I'm so proud of what staff has done to pull this off and to get this, because I think it's award-winning. But we are held harmless in this entire process, and when, this is not going to cost us, if for some tragic reason, the worst-case scenario is it would have to come to an end, there's no expense. So I just want the public to know that. Alder Thomas?
Yeah, my question was along the same line that Doug, which is, if we, if it doesn't work, do we take it out of fund? Do we levy for it? I think it's very clear that we want to make everybody, if, if this passes, that all of the departments will be held harmless. If it doesn't work, that we will take money out of surplus to make their budgets whole. And we have enough without dipping below our percentage.
Alder O'Connor? Okay. Alder Holmquist?
I was thinking the other day, and I couldn't find it in our big manual here, of, although I know we're anticipating savings in the MG&E side of the bill, but if I remember correctly from the spreadsheet when we were going through this, that there was also the purchase of the rec credits in the, in the process. And so where, where am I seeing those numbers?
They'd be included in the...
That's the...
It's not, it's put, we put them together in the JV, to be your election bill, so you're not going to see like a broad cover, special count, it's not really.
I'm trying to remember the spreadsheet correctly, from the potential savings and the potential cost of the, the rec credits.
Right, you have the credit, you have the expense, too, which would go into the expenditure account.
So the savings is a net number?
I just don't remember seeing the savings at large this early in the game.
Just kind of go through, you know, the accounts and decrease. We had those numbers up kind of high, too, beginning with, so there was some corrections in there, too. And I don't think, to be honest, in the end, we're much of a risk right now. I don't think, 3,500 last year, come in at 3,200, so we're 3,000 kind of under right now, if compared to last year, too. Just looking at the general library compared to this year, the estimate's 3,200, 32,000, we went to 3,500, so we're not, just kind of correcting a little bit, too, so I think we have some more of a test year a little bit. I think where the numbers are right now, I'm, I mean, I feel confident with the decrease that we'd be okay with, yeah?
Without even dipping into the...
Well, I think we will, at the very end.
At the very end, goes off for a month, but...
I mean, I keep you posted on this, but I think it's going to be close. It really depends, too, on the years, you know, some years you have a bad drought, some years you have a bad weather, and sometimes it's variables in there, too, to be, to consider, just not knowing the year.
I, I think this could get plugged in, but I don't think we're going to, this is the end of the discussion, because we are at the tip of opening that Pandora's box for the utilities, and they have... Some concern, just so it's post-Manona concern, not pre-Manona. Further questions? Was there a second? Yes, there was a second, correct. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Again, on behalf of the city council, and the mayor, and the city administrator, thank you, staff, for all the time and effort. Oh, no, it's done.
We're not going to worry on the budget.
All right. I want to still thank them, even though we haven't voted on it, regardless of how this may turn out. But it would probably be better to have it passed in some sense. So is there a motion for approval of the 2,000?
Yeah, there's a motion.
Cathy, and Mayor.
Oh, there was out there.
What we've been amending.
All right. Is there discussion to the whole budget? Hearing none? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Holmquist?
Aye.
Alder Thomas?
Aye.
Alder Bussie?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder O'Connor?
Aye.
Budget is approved. Now, I would like to add to what I had said. Thank you to staff and to everyone for their effort, and even at times when we don't quite see, I'd aye.
Do we have to adopt a levy?
Yes. But I still want to thank them for the effort that was put forth to get to that, because now it's in our hands.
Do you want the number, Mark? Mark needs to...
Five, eight, six, 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 five, nine, six, 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 three, thousand, five, nine, fifty, four, nine, which is five, six, six, three, five, five, four. Mill rate of 6.12, so the average house will be, if you slip the categories, about $1.
Questions about that? If not, is there a motion for acceptance of the levy? Approval of the levy?
Approval, second.
Second. Discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The budget has been passed?
When the bills will go out?
Yeah, yeah, tonight, it's been approved, but it's still a process in terms of getting that turned in, so the bills will not be hitting our mailboxes until next week.
Sometime you know when they do.
Sometime...
Because you have the other, the other season ahead of us, maybe a lot of improvement in the numbers, and so it's a...
So Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and the like. Just so you know, I have asked staff and asked Janine to create a large poster that will be displayed at the reception desk that shows the pie chart of how this money, these monies are split, because I'm sure you all share in the angst that people give about why their taxes are going up, and we represent about 25% of the pie.
Or 24, schools, 25.
Okay.
Times 12, 40, 17.
So it's 25... So, it's 25% of the big number is what we're responsible to improve tonight. So, there will be a chart on display for that. Okay, thank you, everyone. Do we want to move anything?
Yeah, probably just two items up and then you can go without.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So, if you would not mind, as a courtesy to Mr. Belangi, could we move items 2A and 2B up before closed session? If that's okay. All right. So, item 2B, new business, you'll notice, starred for immediate action, is A, consideration of resolution 13-12-1949, authorizing the issuance and sale of $650,000 of taxable general obligation promissory notes. Is there a motion to take this?
Move to suspend the rules and take this out of order?
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a motion for approval?
Don't move.
Second.
Motion second. Mark?
Just a quick thing before, just to recap what the $650,000 is for. It's for a developer's agreement for Fairway Glen, who actually just turned in her paperwork for this. So, it's perfect timing for this.
Jeff, I think you have some good news that you're going to share with us before you get to that. And also, I just want, so, because you were in the audience, the mayor does care about revenue, but not above all else. So, I just wanted to make sure that you weren't cringing back there, so.
No, that was great. Thank you. Appreciate it. I understand. It's always nice, you know, in my job, just, if you don't stick around, you don't know what you absolutely do. I mean, I understand the finance and all those kinds of things, but all the other things that a council does and how a city operates. And you know, I'm benefited, you're benefited because you've chosen to serve. And, you know, I go home and get my tax bill, I don't get too bent out of shape. When I get my utility bill, I kind of understand. And I've always said that everybody ought at least serve one term on a village board or a city council or somewhere, so. But I'm sure you're going to get more than 25% of the compliments when the people come in too, because that's just the way people are.
Does that ever happen?
Well, I thank you, and we do have great news. I think, as you all know, having been here for some time, we, we look at every issue we do from a number of aspects, and certainly first and foremost, when I came in and years ago, and got to sit down with Kathy, was there, and the previous two mayors actually, and Administrator Dave Burner, some of the things we laid out at the time were to strengthen our credit rating. That was one of the things we talked about. I remember that first meeting. And going forward, doing some things that would certainly benefit and enhance the, the city in the long run. And I'm happy to say, if you had a chance to look at your credit report from Standard and Poor's, that, you know, Pat and, and Mark did an excellent job, because they got us an upgrade. So, I'm going to give them 100% of the accolades on that one. But a lot of it certainly is due to our history, your history, I mean, in terms of how you've looked at your debt, how you've managed the debt. You have, I, I copied, I think, the two major pieces of pages out of that report. We can talk a little bit about that. I don't want to belabor it. But I just want you to know, that's always a concern when we look to structure our debt and how that will affect our rating, certainly because our rating is indicative of what we pay in terms of interest in any given market. It allows us to compete at incredibly high level. You've just been upgraded. And as Alder Thomas said, when she came in and I asked, I said, "How are you doing?" She says, "I'm stable." And we are a double A+ stable, and she was very good with that. I once got a client upgraded from an A to an A1, and the mayor sent me a little box, and I opened it, and there was a bottle of A1 steak sauce in there. I thought, that's pretty cute. I couldn't find any double A+ steak sauce, otherwise you'd all have one in front of you tonight. So, that's great news. Obviously, the next step up is the triple A, which, you know, I used to think we were totally out of reach. But now, with the changes in Standard and Poor's rating criteria and how they weight various levels, I actually asked them if it was possible, and it is possible. But I'm not going to say we're going to get there next time around. But again, you're all to be commended for taking good advice, weighing your options. We've done a lot of financing here over the last seven or eight years, because you've undertaken some projects which really needed to be done, and, and you've managed that debt quite well. So, congratulations on that. Tonight, we have two issues. One is new money, as Mark just said. The first one we're undertaking is the 650. Again, very positive in terms of being aggressive in terms of our TIF districts and trying to get development within your community. You've done that, and you're continuing to do that. And this, of course, is, hey, we get a developer that meets their end of the bargain, and we're meeting ours. So, timing is good. If you will, you'll, you can take a look at the pricing summary, both yields and coupons. I always look at the bottom line, I look at the true interest cost or total interest cost, which I scribbled in on there. Now, keep in mind, these, these are taxable, which are higher in terms of costs than tax-exempt. But I can remember a lot of years when even a four- and five-year piece of paper never would come close to a 268 in terms of a true interest cost, indicative, of course, as we all know, that where interest rate markets are and have been. Kathy, do you have a copy? Did you-
Yep, I'm fine.
Lose it for you? Otherwise, I'll get another one. But we're at a 2.682%, that's all-in costs. Excellent in terms of the, of where we are. We've structured it somewhat level payments, so that our increments will pay it off. This is not something that's going to hit your tax levy in terms of your, your net debt service levy. It certainly is anticipate fully self-supported. And our TIDs have been, you know, we hope they continue to be, and you guys have done a great job in making all those efforts possible, creating donor recipient TIDs, et cetera, so.
Again, this is for the Fairway Glen agreement.
I, I do want to make just a comment on basically the third page of this handout, which is the second page of the rating criteria. Hate to be called weak for anything. And I took it up with Standard and Poor's. I said, "Please explain this to me. How can a double A credit in any category be weak?" And they said, "Well, Jeff, you have to understand our new criteria." I said, "Please, educate me. I'm always happy to learn." They're weighted differently in terms of, of strengths. Put it to you this way, we're, we're rating debt. Debt is a bad thing. Okay? That's the way they look at it. They say, "Yeah, if you've got debt, we have a responsibility to administer that debt and to make those payments." So, right away, it's a negative in the rating process. It doesn't mean if you have no debt, you're going to be a triple A. That's never the case, because we're rating debt. It's, it's kind of, yeah, Bill, I agree with you. And this is the way it basically is explained. And they categorize it in terms of the percentage of our debt relative to our overall total expenditures. Okay? And they look at it on an annualized basis. So, one year, you could be weak, the next year, you could be very strong. Okay? Now, as a community of our size, we have addressed a great deal of infrastructure improvements, et cetera. And we've managed our debt short, because guess what? Short debt gets a much higher value towards our double A rating than debt out over a longer period of time. Yet, that longer period of debt would reduce our ratio, which may bump us from that weak into the moderate or strong into the very strong. You follow me? That category only represents 10% of our rating. I don't worry about it too much. But I did say this. Now, my efforts to help my clients become triple As, because we all want to be perfect, what do I suggest to them? That they lengthen out their debt so that ratio drops, and we go from a weak to a moderate to a... I said, "Well, Jeff, we're not stupid. We realize what you're trying to accomplish there." And let's face it, that would actually, in the geometrics of the whole thing, cause more strain on you, because you're not, one of our categories is how rapidly are they retiring their debt. So, you know, it's like you're darned if you do, darned if you don't kind of thing. They actually said to me, "Don't change a thing." They are managing their debt perfectly. I said, "Okay, we'll accept that weak under 10% of our rating as a result of the fact that..." You also will note, they quote that 79.2% of our debt is amortized over the first 10-year period, which is, which is good. And they also said, "Look, we realize you have to go out and borrow to do infrastructure improvements. You're not going to be able to levy those things. I mean, it, it just isn't the way it works. So, you're going to have to go out and borrow, and you're addressing those needs." If we find a community that we see is not addressing those needs, because they're delaying to re, just for the sole purpose of reducing that ratio of annual debt expenditures to your total expenditures, I said, "That's not going to be a positive thing in our rating analysis either." And they also, in their new category, in their new rating methodology, the analysts, which I thought was great, have, it's almost like the, what was the, Simon Cowell's kind of thing where the, the judges could save you. The actual, it reminded me of that. The actual analysts could say, "Listen, this is a one-time thing. Maybe your debt ratios are a bit high, and they're out of skew, and they're into that weak category. But everything else is so strong that even if committee were to say, geez, you know, should we just let them where they are or downgrade?" They'd say, "No, not, not for this particular client." So, obviously, it helps to have those same analysts who understand, certainly Wisconsin credits, your credit, et cetera. I'm here to tell you that I'm not going to worry about that, that weak categorization. I want your debt to be rapidly amortized. We're going to talk a little bit about the value of that, I think, in our closed session, and how we've managed our debt, and what the fact that our decrease in valuation has done to everybody in the state. So, don't worry about that. You see weak, and why are we weak? We're a double A+. Not too weak if you're a double A+. I mean, you go down, if you go down, you go triple A, double A+, double A, double A minus, A+, A, A minus, B double A. We're a long ways from that bottom investment grade rating, so, and we want to be.
And thank you for your help, and thanks, Mark and Pat, for keeping this on the straight and narrow. So, back to the original motion, with the $650,000 bond. Questions? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder O'Connor?
Aye.
Alder Holmquist?
Aye.
Alder Thomas?
Aye.
Alder Bussie?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to item B, we'll note is also starred consideration of resolution 15, 13-12-1950, the authorization of the issuance and sale of $9,910,000 of taxable general obligation refunding bonds.
Move to suspend the rules and take this out of order?
Is the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Suspend the rules, take this out of order. Is there a motion for approval?
I moved for approval with, and amend it to be $10 million based on the discussion we had in finance.
Which you'll soon learn about, but that is the correct number. There's a motion, and it's been seconded to amend that to $10 million. So, is there, all those in favor of, well, of moving it?
Just, okay, it's just, it's just been amended. Okay, so, don't have to prove that. All right. Jeff?
Thank you. Appreciate that. We have our Garden Circle project. We have a note anticipation, a note outstanding. The note has two years left on it, and I've discussed this with administration and, and finance. And we've been watching this over the period of the fall. The note's callable, was callable on 10/1 and any day thereafter, 10/1 of 2013. We originally did the Garden Circle project in 2007 with a note anticipation note, which had a 5.562% rate on it. Not too bad for a taxable rate at that time. We then, after three years, got out of that into a 2.60. We're three years into that. We could live with it for the next two years, but then we're going to be forced to do something with that $9,910,000 issue for Garden Circle. I, it was my suggestion to administration and finance that we put this into long-term bonds now, because I believe, two years from now, when the maturity date would come and we'd have to act, interest rates are going to be considerably higher than where they are today. We don't lose any flexibility in terms of that, because we're really targeted or hinged on the actual cash flows being generated by that tax incremental district. We're ultimately, in the next number of years, going to need probably some assistance from a donor recipient relationship with our existing TIDs, which is not a problem. The, the quantified numbers have been done by Verbecker. And so, here we are, taking it long-term. If you take a look at the structure, which is the bottom part of that handout, we've got, we've got this basically blended into some existing TIF issues, and we're not really amortizing much more than $100,000 annually until we get out to 2021. But keep in mind, we're amortizing other debt at, at a level that the TID can currently support. At 2000, there'll be another TID to come offline, I believe, and we'll be able to include that as a donor recipient, a donor, this a recipient. But if you look at what we've done here, by statute, we have to pay this debt out by 2028. We can't go any farther statutorily. That will be its full 20-year life. So, what we've done is we've structured it and blended it into your existing debt. Obviously, S and P liked it, because we got a double A+ on these particular notes in our existing debt. So, it, it works well within how we're managing our debt structure. And we've got a good portion of this callable. If you look at those little tiny Cs, and the mayor's absolutely right, those really are tiny. But all of those maturities to the right of pricing, from 2023 to 28, which are basically the coupons of 4% out to the 475s, those are all callable at your discretion. And in the future, obviously, if we're at the short end of the yield curve again, and it behooves us to reduce and get rid of those for ones and twos, we're going to do that just to save interest. If they're the long end, if we've got some additional monies in TID where we could call that last maturity, the 475s, we'll call them away and get rid of them, because you can call any or all the bonds. You don't have to call at full maturity. It's in $5,000 increments. So, we still have maintained that flexibility. As I was telling administration and the mayor earlier in marketing today, and again, I apologize, I was getting a bit long-winded, but I think you should know this, very aggressively marketing that. We never got the issue done until 2:30, a confirmation that we had enough bonds sold at these particular prices. We had an offer early in the morning for all of those bonds, a million two out to a million three. So, basically, all of the callable bonds in the, in the previous, but the insurance company said, "We'll buy them all at those particular yields." Actually, at yields, I think we're about a tenth of a percent lower, one tenth of a percent, so 10 basis points. But they wanted us to eliminate the call feature. There was no way I was going to do that. We're not going to get rid of all of those, you know, $4 million worth of call, half the issue, basically, just to get them at a tenth lower than, you know, where we think the market should be. So, that wasn't enough. I said, "Twos I'll take, but not 10 basis points." So, we actually continued to work and found other buyers that were willing to take them, certainly and commit to these particular prices with the calls, call features left in place. So, and I think that's very important to us here. We don't know what the future's going to bring, but I'd like you to have that flexibility to get in and out of any or all of these bonds, should market rates change or our cash position change.
You certainly have kept us in touch with the market realities and taken advantage of those. And President Obama hasn't come here to yell at us since. Has, that's a, just a quick side. Did other cities get rid of those?
Yes, yes. And as you know, you were the first in the country.
First, we were the first.
Yes. In fact, I'm, I just did McQuanigle last month. They had four point some million that they're out. A number of my other associates are doing, were doing multiple. O'Connell Walk just did about 7 million.
So, we weren't alone.
No, and there were people waiting to get in. We, we happened to be the first ones out of the block, because we just happened to be ready. With the timing was exactly when we had our payments. Mark got the notice that they were going to cut the payment. We said, "Okay." And it triggers the extraordinary call redemption, so we did. And Plattville will be doing 5.4.2 million next two weeks.
Good. Questions of Mr. Belangi? And again, thank you so much for, you helped get us these ratings. And have you provided the editor of the Herald Independent one of these, if you have an extra copy?
I can, I'm certainly happy to.
And I really point out, to please read closely pages two and three.
Yes, I might have the credit, hopefully I have the credit report. I'll give the young lady a copy.
The summary, I think, is excellent.
Full copy of the record.
With that, is there any further discussion? Seeing none with, yes.
I just had a question, which has been running through my head, which is, of all of the communities our size in Manana, if you were to say, how many had this rating at our level or below?
Kathy, I wish I would have brought the sheet, because we do actually have the Wisconsin, all the Wisconsin cities and villages that were rated listed. And what I'll do tomorrow is I'll actually get that, if you would. I'll, I'll email that to Mark, so that you guys can have it.
Yeah.
That's a good question. That's a good question. You're, there's not many that are double A pluses. Look, I think there's only four triple As left in the state of Wisconsin. And, you know, then double As, there's not a lot of double As. And particularly, double As with a population that you, you don't have a large population. So, you know, if you would really kind of think scrutinize and take a look at, really a comparative analysis to comparable-sized cities, you might be the only double A-plus in that category, in, that falls into that category. And there's going to be some with larger populations and 2 or 3 billion in equalized value, certainly, but that's cheap.
It's wonderful living in Lake Wabegon, I mean, Manona.
I thought it was Camelot.
All's good, so welcome aboard.
I will do that, and then Mark will have that.
All right. Unless there's further discussion with the clerk, please call the roll.
Alder O'Connor?
Aye.
Alder Holquist?
Aye.
Alder Thomas?
Aye.
Alder Bussey?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much, Jeff. If we could continue on this path of moving all the public items ahead, that would be great. So, and it might set the tenor for the closed session, depending if the city attorney has a contract or not. So, I'd like to move on to item E, "Consideration of Resolution 13-11-1944, approving a contract renewal with City Attorney William Cole." This was brought forth at the last meeting, and Attorney Cole had asked for a three-year renewal in that personnel and finance, and before this barred, it was, and the reason being is that he was looking at some extraordinarily high premium increases for liability insurance and health insurance, and it was asked of Attorney Cole that we were, we love his work and we want him, but just being fiduciarily responsible, if we could just codify what those increases might be. So, anything you wanted to reply back, Bill? Is that an accurate reflection from what everyone? Okay. Is there a motion for approval?
Approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alder O'Connor, second to that. Further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. You will come to the meeting. Good. Item...
Man.
Item two, a new business. Two C?
One.
Two C, or one C? Well, that's closed session.
G, G, two C.
I want to do two C.
Oh, sorry, man.
To finish it. Two C is first reading of Consideration of Resolution 13-12-1951, adopting future compensation increases for the mayor and city council members of the city of Manona, brought forth by Alder Personwood and O'Connor. At Personnel and Finance this evening, this motion was approved. Alder Wood?
Just briefly, this resolution would increase compensation for the city council members from $3,000 a year to $4,800, and the mayor from $4,800 to $7,800. And basically, we are currently well below average, as mayor in particular, for Wisconsin cities with similar populations. We haven't, there hasn't been an increase since 1995. I guess one thing I would note is because the compensation cannot be raised after the first day for filing for the election to the office, which was December 1st, the increases cannot go into effect until the 2015 and 2016 budgets.
So, I guess the important part to the public is no one currently seated at this table would benefit even if this does get approved at the next meeting.
Even if we had, even if we had done it earlier and it was in this year's budget, it doesn't go into effect until each office holder or each seat is up for election.
So, everyone can get a chance to jump after those juicy raises and run next time for mayor. Is there any other discussion? All right. Thank you very much. Any miscellaneous business this evening? Nope. Reports of committees, commissions, boards. Is there anyone from staff that had anything to share? Alder Holquist?
No report.
No report.
Alder Bussey?
No report.
Alder O'Connor?
No report.
Alder Wood?
No report.
City clerk?
New voter machines will be in effect, be in use beginning with the first election in 2014. They're digital, and I think they'll be a pretty, pretty nice product for our salt to use. Instead of drawing an arrow, you're now going to be filling an oval, and so, we'll be ready for that.
City administrator?
Yeah, our senior center director was unable to attend, but asked me to report that the senior holiday lunch dinner will be on next Wednesday, I believe, next Thursday, I'm sorry, next Thursday in the community center. And as always, she'd like to have some volunteers from our elected officials and staff.
Perfect. Just two items I have. Continuing on this path of great news that makes Manona unique and special is, and Andy might have something to say about this, but very exciting, but you've known for years and years, those of you who have been on council, and even if you haven't been on for years, but when I was first in Alder, we had made an application to get a low-power radios, FM radio station, and I think that was five years ago the process began. Finally, under this administration, the FCC decided to open that process. There was major pushback from large radio stations that did not want the spectrum to be parsed out in a manner that allowed these low-power FM's to get in there. Well, lo and behold, it even got delayed because of the government shutdown in October, so when they were supposed to decide it, and so, last week, they finally decided. And I think we're, it's still a long process, but I think we're going to have good news, and I think Manona will be the owner, one of the only cities with its own radio station, that 98.1 FM on your radio dial with signal strength that will cover the entire Isthmus in East Madison. And so, those of you who've always dreamed of being a disc jockey, your opportunity might be forthcoming, and I can't wait to hear that lawyer fireside chat on Sunday evenings. But very exciting. And as it relates to emergency messaging, I think it's just one more step that just makes us a unique city, and it'll be a great educational tool that will, will be great. So, stay tuned. But I think, you know, in Madison, there were only five applications. Nobody went for our frequency, and our frequency seems to be far enough away from anybody out there, so I'll be ticked if we don't get it.
Where are they going to be housed?
Probably the school. We'll have to dust off those cobweb documents, but we'll put it at the school. But we will need programming. That was an important part, and live program, or, you know, new, fresh programming was important. So, seriously, if there is anyone out there, there's going to be incredible opportunities with this. Then, the second one is build Manona is next Monday from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. on December 10th, and that's, this is the third year of what I think has been a very successful opportunity to recruit businesses and to sing the praises. That will be at the community center from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. There will be adult beverages and snacks served in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce, and there will be a new announcement at that event.
Tuesday, right?
Tues...
Tuesday.
Tuesday, Tuesday, the 10th.
Tuesday, the 10th.
Tuesday, the 10th.
Tuesday, okay, it's the 10th. Yeah, Tuesday, the 10th. Yeah, thank you. Tuesday, Tuesday, for all of you who are watching on our, our radio station. There was one other thing, but now I'm flustered, but that's it. Chief election inspectors, I'm, there's a whole list, so I'm not going to read all the names, but we have chief election inspectors effective January 1st through December 31st, and then election inspectors for the same period. And there is probably 50 names. So, thank you, everyone who so graciously volunteers their time, and I know Joan is certainly appreciative. Would there be a motion for approval of the, all these election inspectors? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in the second, Alder whoever. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Do I need to abstain because my name is on your list and Mary's is on the list?
Oh, so, do we have enough votes to make this all happen? Okay. Yep. I guess we're good.
Three.
They need to abstain.
Yeah, they need to abstain, but do I need to vote?
The majority of those not abstaining.
Exactly.
Yeah, so, okay. All right. So, you all have jobs as inspectors, and thank you to the two council members for doing that. That is all of the public part of the evening. Oh, there, I know what the last thing is. My media background, you always try to have a, have a lead to get people to watch the next show and to tease. It's called the proverbial tease. So, I'm teasing the next meeting. There's going to be a big announcement of a personnel change, and so, I'm going to leave it at that.
You're getting groomed, mayor.
It could be, who knows what it could be, but I just urge everyone to tune in, and that's the tease for the next, the 16th, I believe. Is that the 16th? Yeah. Yeah, stay tuned. Big news. All right. With that, I move on to item G1C, "Convening in Closed Session Under Wisconsin Statute Section 19.85, Pren 1, Pren C, Considering Employment Promotion, Compensation, or Performance Evaluation Data of Any Public Employee Over Which The Governmental Body Has Jurisdiction or Exercises Responsibility." This is the city attorney contract renewal.
Unless you want to go into closed session on that.
No, we, didn't we just? Okay. All right. Stand corrected on that part, but we also have Section 19.85, Pren 1, Pren E, "Deliberation or Negotiation of the Purchasing of Public Properties, the Investing of Public Funds, or Conducting Other Specified Public Business Whenever Competitive or Bargaining Reasons Required a Closed Session." This discussion centers around the potential purchase of properties for economic development reasons. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
Move.
Second.
There's a motion by Alder Wood and second by Alder Bussey. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder O'Connor?
Aye.
Alder Holquist?
Aye.
Alder Thomas?
Aye.
Alder Bussey?
Aye.